Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council Chambers in a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today Friday, May 3rd, 2002. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and we always invite the public to attend and participate in council meetings. We can also be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35, or via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. We have yet to achieve a quorum for today's meeting, but this being Friday, as is customary, we will begin with some special recognitions and presentations by council members of important people in the city of Los Angeles. And I'd actually like to recognize for our first presentation this morning, the mayor of our great city of Los Angeles, Mayor James Kenneth Hahn.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. For the past month, the city of Los Angeles was united with our reading program, One Book, One City, L.A., by encouraging the residents of Los Angeles to read the classic novel Fahrenheit 451. We celebrated our city's diversity, and we also celebrated a great treasure of Los Angeles, author Ray Bradbury. But we also celebrated coming together as a community. We had over thirty book discussions that were carried out throughout the city of Los Angeles at our libraries, at Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf Stores, at Barnes &amp; Noble Bookstores. Interestingly, Fahrenheit 451 became the number-one paperback bestseller on the L.A. Times Bestseller list the week of April 14th. It was number two last week. Over four hundred and fifty-one students from the L.A. Unified School District participated in the art and essay contest, and we have some of those student winners here with us today. We also had a town hall discussion live on KPCC Radio, 89.3 FM, with Ray Bradbury. We also culminated this with Ray leading a discussion at the L.A. Times Festival of Books at UCLA over the weekend, and we reached our goal. We were able to get everybody thinking about the city and thinking about books. A lot of people described Fahrenheit 451 as a futuristic novel or something else, but you know, Ray wrote this during the McCarthy era, and he was very concerned about limiting different voices, different opinions. And he really loved books, and that's what Fahrenheit 451 has meant to me. It's about loving books. It's about opening your mind to different possibilities by reading people who have different points of view. And if you don't have the opportunity to listen to other people and to listen to other points of view, you're going to grow up pretty narrow. And so I love the fact that everybody loved this book. I got a number of wonderful emails to my office thanking us for picking that book, and we look forward to doing it again. From the...I'd like to present to the city council the winners of our art and essay contest. First, in the arts contest, we have some of the art up here, as well as some of the essays that are here on these easels. I hope that members of the council, others, have a chance to look at this. Our winner from University High, Molly Rabbit. Mary Catherine Rabbit, okay. And thanks to our sponsors, SBC Pacific Bell, glad to present you a $500 check.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also from University High, Joanne Again. As a runner-up in the art contest, I'd like to present this scroll to you, and a $200 check.
Thank you very much.
Here, turn around. We'll get your picture. And from Belmonteheim, Jorge Zapata. All right, Jorge, here's a $200 check for you, and thanks for participating in One Book, One City. In our essay contest, we had a number of great essays, as people wrote, you know, continuation of the book from their point of view. The winner was from South Gate High, Julio Velez. Julio? From King Drew Medical Magnet School, Carol Chacon. And our last runner-up, from Marshall High, Marin Kachu. I'd like to congratulate all of our winners from the L.A. Unified School District. If I might, Mr. President, I would like to thank our premier sponsor from SBC Pacific Bell, Dave Nichols. Appreciate...they were absolutely incredible at sponsoring this. Appreciate your support, Dave. Jay McDonald from Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf. Jay Lindstrom from Barnes &amp; Noble. Oh, who are you from? Jan Lindstrom, sorry, Jan.
That's okay.
Jan Lindstrom. I bought another copy of the book at Barnes &amp; Noble at The Grove, which is a great, great store there. We love that new store in the city of Los Angeles. And also Doug Dowey, representing Fleischman-Hillard International Communications, who did a great job for One Book, One City. Doug? Peter Persick from L.A. Public Library, not here. Glenn Gritsner from L.A. USD is here, Glenn. We really appreciate the cooperation of the school district. My daughter was reading the book at Dodson Middle School. I know a number of schools participated. Thank you very much. Well, I want to congratulate everybody who participated in this program. I enjoyed reading the book again. You know, a classic like that is always good to reread again, because you're a different person the second time you read it than when you read it in high school. So I hope all of you who read it this time think about reading it thirty years later like I did. Thank you again, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, the mayor and I stand before you and the council and all of our community members here in the audience to...first of all, we want to welcome everyone this weekend to El Pueblo, because we're doing a big Cinco de Mayo celebration this weekend. You know, it's a big festivity. The mariachi...today, we're going to have a mariachi come out and perform a few songs that are provided to us by our local merchant at Mercadito. And so let me bring out mariachi, Cuattemoc.
Thank you, Mr. President. We really appreciate mariachi, Cuattemoc. I think we'd like him to play one more song, and we hope everyone comes down to El Pueblo this weekend to celebrate Cinco de Mayo. We had a great, great crowd, probably half a million people, last weekend for Fiesta Broadway, and this whole week, we've really been celebrating Mexican heritage, our neighbors and friends south of the border, and we are one...un grande familia. Un grande familia. So, could we have one more song?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Colleagues and staff, we have some pandulce, some Mexican food as well in the back. We invite you to come partake if you haven't already done so, and have a happy Cinco de Mayo.
Mr. President, let me continue with today's presentations on behalf of the Council District 14. Let me bring up Amanda Navarro, the director of Avance here in Los Angeles. The Avance Center is on Fourth and Chicago in the community of Bull Heights. Avance is a program that focuses on nine-month-old...is a nine-month birth-to-three-year parenting and early child family support program for both mothers and fathers. Parents learn lessons in child growth and development, make educational toys, and are made aware of the community resources. The core program emphasizes the parent as the first teacher and the importance of the first three years of life for learning and development. The program provides support and educational services to low-income, predominantly Latino families in Bull Heights. Avance strives to strengthen the family unit, to enhance parenting skills which nurture the optimal development of children, to promote educational success, and to foster the personal and economic success of the parents. On behalf of the 14th Council District, it's a great pleasure and joy that, one, we have this service because Avance has chosen to be part of the 14th Council District, and two, to really applaud their work and effort in working with our residents. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles and my office, I want to present to you the certificate of appreciation on behalf of Avance to Amanda Navarro.
Coincidentally, today is our first anniversary in Los Angeles. Avance...
sector, Avance is a place where I'm sure you can have a nice tax-deductible donation. Council members, recently, we celebrated a very important day here in Los Angeles, the City Council. On April 30th this year, we declared in the City of Los Angeles Dia de los Niños, which for us is very important. It's an effort that's been coming across the nation. The Senate already passed adopting April 30th as Dia de los Niños. As you know, in the Latino community, we are very proud of our strong value of family, and we do everything we can to reinforce it. And so there are communities and institutions out there who work very hard. So, let me bring up Hector Perez Pacheco to introduce everyone who's here, but also thank him for spearheading and being part of a committee for Dia de los Niños. The committee included National Latino Children's Institute, Project Amiga, the International Institute of Los Angeles, Angel Step, Crystal Stairs, CAMEX, Channel 34, Youth Opportunity Movement, Make-A-Wish, and the El Pueblo staff. It was an all-day festivity down there at El Pueblo. From what I understand, a couple thousand individuals came by and participated in this event, and we really just wanted to not only highlight this event to the City Council, but also thank you as colleagues and as a city for recognizing Dia de los Niños. And let me just present and pass this resolution to Hector, and he can give us an update, and I'll define individuals who helped out. Hector?
Okay. Again, we would like to thank the President and the council members for supporting us on this event that we have. And it's an annual event that has taken place for the last four years. And it's an annual event that takes place throughout the country. And again, it's to celebrate the achievements of children. And on my left side, we have Irene Portillo, who's our co-chair, who has been very helpful in helping organize this event. And we have Tony Aguilar from Youth Opportunity Movement and Eloise Crawford for Make-A-Wish Foundation. And we applaud the council for supporting us, and we thank Councilman Nick Pacheco for all the effort and support that he has done for numerous years that we have done this event. And we plan to have this event every year, and we hope that events like this takes place throughout the communities of Los Angeles and throughout the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again, Councilman Nick Pacheco of the great 14th District. We were so pleased to have your support, recognizing Dia de los Niños, celebrating all Americans, all young Americans. And it was our privilege to co-chair this event. And we were so successful at Olivera Street that we hope to be there again next year. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. The chair recognizes Mr. Weiss for an introduction.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And it's my pleasure on today, the day that we're, hello? Are we on here? It's my pleasure today, on the day that we're celebrating Cinco de Mayo in the City of Los Angeles, that we have with us some terrific students from the Wildwood School. And I'd ask if you guys could stand up, all you kids from Wildwood. I'd like to introduce you and your teachers. You're here with Ms. Winthrop's class, Ms. Rosen's class, and Ms. Boucher's class. We have 45 third-grade students from the Wildwood School, and they're here for a tour of City Hall and a bunch of other interesting things around. Is everybody standing up? Terrific. Let's give them a big round of applause, the kids from Wildwood. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Members, I believe we have achieved a quorum. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Berenson, Galanter, Garcetti, Gruehl, Hahn, Holden, and Labange. Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Sainpa dia. Ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Council is officially now in session. Members, unless there's an objection, what I'd like to do is soup through our brief agenda today, taking a pause momentarily in presentations, and after having gone through some agenda items, then return to the balance of the presentations scheduled for today. Mr. Clerk, first order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Garcetti moves, and Mr. Weiss seconds.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Miskowski moves, and Mr. Labange seconds.
On the regular agenda, items numbers one and two are items noticed for public hearing.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to be heard on these items. We shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call item one or item number two special? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Ten ayes. Those being ordinances, do carry over for a second reading.
Mr. President, items numbers three through five on the regular agenda are items noticed, items that public hearings have been held.
Items three through five now before us. Members wishing to call any specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Items four and five are approved. Item three being an ordinance carries over for a second reading.
Mr. President, item number six, it's a resolution submitted by Councilman Garcetti.
Okay, item number six now before us.
I understand, Mr. Garcetti, you may have a substitute resolution for item number six. Okay, recommendation to receive and file.
To receive and file item number six, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Item number six is received and filed.
Item number seven on the continuation agenda is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Item number seven now before us. Any member wishing to call item number seven special? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Item number six is received and filed.
Item number seven on the continuation agenda is an item for which public hearing has not been held. A new ordinance has been distributed.
Okay, item number eight now before us. Do not have requests from members of the public to be heard on this item. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. On item number eight, Ms. Galanter?
On item number eight, we have an amending motion, which I think is just being distributed. And we have somebody here from the department to explain it if...
Technical in nature?
Uh, is it tech... We better let her explain it.
Is that staff member here?
I guess they're all going to explain it. Maybe one of you can do it in 10 words or less.
I'm sorry.
What we need mainly is an explanation of the amendment, the amending motion, which Wendy was...
Wendy, were you in it explaining the amendment? Somebody needs...
I don't know what the amendment is. Good morning. This is Wendy Yancy with Department of Water and Power. Before you is a request to approve the bid criteria for a contract that we have negotiated. The amending motion basically requests that we approve the bid criteria by ordinance, that we send the contract, which was inadvertently sent to council, back to DWP, and then, most importantly, that we follow procedures the next time this comes up. And that is basically to have this ordinance approved before we actually negotiate contracts of this nature.
Ms. Galanter.
This is, without belaboring the point here, this is, the reason we're sending the contract back is it's not a big enough amount to have needed to come here in the first place.
The contract actually is only for 30 months as opposed to three years, which would require council approval.
Right, right. So, it's under the threshold. It shouldn't have been sent here in the first place. So, that's why we're sending it back. We are required to adopt an ordinance that establishes criteria. And for reasons I know you don't want to hear in public, you may not want to hear at all, this process got a little confused. And the final part of the amendment is to make sure it doesn't ever get confused like that again. So, I would urge your support of the amendment and the motion as amended.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter. Item number eight, worth an amendment, is now before us. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the amending motion for item number eight, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now let's open the roll on item number eight as amended, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Item number eight as amended is approved, but being an ordinance does carry over for a second reading. Next item?
Mr. President, item number nine is a closed-session item. Do you wish that to remain on the desk?
Let's hold that on the desk.
That's the remainder of the regular meeting. You do have a special meeting agenda. Do you wish to enter into that?
Let us adjourn, recess temporarily the special meeting agenda, and, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll on the special meeting.
Berenson, Galanter, Garcetti, Gruehl, Hahn, Holden, Labange, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Sainpa dia. Eleven members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Item number one of the special meeting agenda now before us. I do not have requests from members of the public to be heard on this item. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Members wishing to call item number one of the special meeting agenda special? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now let's open the roll on item number eight as amended, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Item number eight as amended is approved, but being an ordinance does carry over for a second reading. Next item?
Mr. President, item number nine is a closed-session item. Do you wish that to remain on the desk?
Let's hold that on the desk.
That's the remainder of the regular meeting. You do have a special meeting agenda. Do you wish to enter into that?
Let us adjourn, recess temporarily the special meeting agenda, and, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll on the special meeting.
Berenson, Galanter, Garcetti, Gruehl, Hahn, Holden, Labange, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Sainpa dia. Eleven members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Item number one of the special meeting agenda now before us. I do not have requests from members of the public to be heard on this item. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Members wishing to call item number one of the special meeting agenda special? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. And I believe that is the end of the special meeting agenda. Let us adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting agenda.
The only item on the desk is item number nine, which is a closed-session matter.
And we're holding that on the desk. Let us now, colleagues, return to presentations for today. The chair recognizes Mr. Labange.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of council. With me today are some very special people. One of our very own, Isabel Roses from the Fire Department. Give Isabel a big hand for all she's done over the years. But also, these are the folks here from the March of Dimes. And we have Ron Silverman, who's the executive director of the Los Angeles Division of the March of Dimes, Susan Linder, who for years has been our greatest contact, and one of the greatest advocates in building our teams, is Scott Hong from the March of Dimes, who's worked closely with all of us in developing the March of Dimes teams as we've effectively been participatory in this special Walk America event. As you may or may not know, 10,000 people came to Griffith Park last Saturday morning and had a great kickoff celebration for the Walk America, where we had great support from not just the City of Los Angeles, but our friends from the County of Los Angeles. Supervisor Yaroslavsky was there, and it's mindful to take note, he had about 19 general managers of county departments there, all in their nice red T-shirts, but joining the County of Los Angeles, the City of Los Angeles, but also the sponsorship with Ralph's Grocery Company, which has always been part of our community. I know many of you have Ralph's throughout your district, but Ralph's has been very involved with Walk America, AT&amp;T Wireless, as well as our very own Los Angeles Department of Water and Power Green Power for Green LA program. All those major sponsors came together in this celebration to walk for healthy babies. And I just wanted to recognize them because you want to hear this great number. Over $2 million was raised last Saturday for the March of Dimes by individuals walking in Griffith Park for the March of Dimes and their efforts for healthy babies. So, as a council member of the City of Los Angeles, as I share with you the great honor to commend people, today I commend the Walk America and the March of Dimes for their work on the six-mile walk that began in the heart of Griffith Park in Crystal Springs, was greatly supported by our fine park rangers, and it lapped through the Los Angeles Zoo and out almost to Travel Town, and came back where there was festivities and activities. I wanted to congratulate the March of Dimes for their dedication and devotion for helping save babies and make their lives and their family lives much happier. So, please join with me in saluting the Los Angeles March of Dimes.
Hello, Mr. President. Good morning, everybody. On behalf of the March of Dimes, it is my pleasure to be here and to take this commendation from Tom Labange, and to thank Tom for being there on Walk Day, to thank Wendy for being there on Walk Day, to thank everybody who participated. We did raise $2 million on Saturday, and I would just like to point out that the mission of the March of Dimes is to ensure that every baby is born healthy. And through all the hard work of all the different departments in the city, the city's raised this year over $300,000. And I would just like to say thank you for that, because without you people and all the hard work of everybody at the city, we would not be able to do what it is that we do. I thank you all very much.
Ms. Gruehl.
Isabel Roses, for a few quick words. One of our leading coordinators. You know, departments have coordinators who help and get all the employees involved. We're the number-one team in the United States, and so Isabel, you're the leader, please.
Okay, Tom's embarrassing me again. I just want to thank Tom for all his support. He helps us so much through the process of getting this big, huge walk together every year, and it's just a great effort to, for healthier babies. And thank you so much to everybody that participates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gruehl.
Lastly, the sponsorship, Winifred Yancy from Los Angeles Water and Power.
Speaking of embarrassing, on the spot, but as you well know, the Department of Water and Power is always ready to step up to the plate to benefit the city in any way possible. The March of Dimes is a great organization, as we all know, and we're just happy to be a part to make that a success and to help our children. Thank you.
Ms. Gruehl.
I just wanted to add my congratulations to all of you. And when I worked in Mayor Bradley's office, I was liaison with March of Dimes and our March of Dimes Walk, and I was so pleased to participate last weekend and see so many city departments and thank our city departments, because this is above and beyond the call of duty. And you all have really done a tremendous job. And to see so many of our departments out there, we look forward to future years, having more people, continuing to be number one, we plan on it. But Tom and I are going to get a lot of council members out there as well next year to walk with us. They may have been in their other communities. We'll come get them to Griffith Park. But March of Dimes is a wonderful organization. You do tremendous things for this community and for our future babies and our future of our city. So, congratulations on an extraordinarily successful event, early in the morning at the wonderful Griffith Park in Tom Labange's district. And thank you again to all the city departments who participated. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, March of Dimes.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. I believe you have another presentation.
Yes, I sure do.
But before you go to the second one, members of the public, members of the council, let's welcome to council chambers the president of the Los Angeles Unified School District Board, my friend Caprice Young.
Caprice. Rangers, if you could join me up here right now. We were just speaking about Griffith Park, and there's many activities in the park. And just a week earlier was the Jimmy Stewart Relay. And the Jimmy Stewart Relay raises money for St. John's Hospital, serving all of West Los Angeles and many other parts of Los Angeles. And on that morning of the Jimmy Stewart Relay, our Rangers go to work. And our Rangers sometimes go to work at 4:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, and they work around the clock throughout the city of Los Angeles. But this particular morning, Ranger Lewis Bernal, who is known as a public safety, park safety officer for the Los Angeles Park Rangers, was on patrol. And on that morning of patrol, on April 21st, he opens the gates to allow people to park in various parts of the park. Behind the Mohollen Fountain and Riverside Drive, not far from the fountain, in the back of there, he noticed a car. In the car were four suspects who were violating violently a woman. His action at that particular point secured the safety of that woman so that she was not tormented anymore. And four of those officers, four of those suspects were held for the arrival of the Los Angeles Police Department. At that particular time, the suspects were arrested and transported to the Northeast Division, where they were investigated by Robbery-Homicide Division of Los Angeles Police Department because the tragedy of rape occurred to this individual. This individual was just 18 years old, relatively new to Los Angeles, and she was picked up off the no matter who they are, should be harmed or violently harmed by others. But Lewis Bernal, with his quick thinking and his ability to secure the area, to hold the suspects at a rightful arrival of other Rangers and the Los Angeles Police Department, will bring these suspects to justice. And I wanted to recognize him for his work here and his work every day and every morning, every early morning and late at night with your colleagues, securing the park properties throughout the city of Los Angeles, and also being there in this particular case to help someone who is being hostile, being hostile violated by individuals who hopefully will see a long time in San Quentin. Louis, on behalf of Eric Garcetti and members of the council, we salute you with this commendation for your work on April 21st and your work every day in the city of Los Angeles. I certainly thank you.
Also, on behalf of all the rape victims in the city and in the world, we, those of us who've been through it know we would rather not have been through it, and we really appreciate it anytime you can either prevent it or stop somebody who might do it again. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, also, the Park Rangers does have a team, and we have Patrick Joyce, who was there as a backup in this particular instance, but also helped secure the area, and Doug Kilpatrick. And also, these two veteran Rangers, all of these are veterans behind me, in this particular instance are getting commendation, but as you know, I live near the park and I spend a lot of time in the park. They're battling people who abuse the park and abuse the area where they shouldn't, and they're also bringing great joy to others by protecting the park and doing what's necessary to make it a very enjoyable place for everybody. So Patrick, I join again in recognizing your work on April 21st and every day as a Park Ranger for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much. And Doug Kilpatrick, for all your work and the work that you do, you're moving me on this side, Doug, I salute you. You were there to help secure the area and help Ranger Bernal, who's not a Ranger but a Park Service Officer, to do the specialty to bringing that person, those four people to justice. So congratulations. Thank you very much. And I'd just like to ask our Chief Ranger, Gary Newton, our Chief Park Ranger, to say a few words on behalf of the Park Rangers of Los Angeles, who protect over 300 parks from the great San Fernando Valley to the wonderful Coit Foreman Park, where last night there was a big rescue by the Fire Department on an area in the great 15th District. Chief Newman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilmember Labange. It wouldn't be a day here with you unless you asked me to speak. I'd like to reiterate what you said and thank these three Rangers for what they do every day, and not specifically just for this incident, but also including it. We have, as you all know, we have a very limited number of Park Rangers to cover the entire city of Los Angeles, 400 parks and recreation centers. And we go out there every day and really do the best job we can, and then these three Rangers behind me are an example of the quality work and the expectation that I have for the division. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, the Park Rangers.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Is Ms. Perry ready with her presentation? Ms. Perry.
You guys want to stand around? And who's the public person? You're going to say a few words? Okay, great. Okay, thank you very much. It's my pleasure today to honor a community-based activist group, Unity Two, for their work as a lead gang intervention agency in the L.A. Bridges Two program. They have done an excellent job. Since 1997, the staff of Unity Two has enrolled hardcore gang members in conflict mediation and anger management sessions. Additionally, Unity Two continues to promote peace in our community by hosting weekly crisis intervention training and coordinating numerous community peace vigils and violence prevention activities. They collaborate and partner with faith-based institutions, businesses, and other community activists, including radio personalities Steve Harvey, Muhammad Ali, and Harry Belafonte. They've established a partnership with the Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles for welfare-to-work initiatives to make sure that job opportunities are provided for all. Their incredible work and dedication has earned Unity Two several honors, including an honor from the Assembly, Speaker of the Assembly, Herb Wesson. He has given them accommodation for community peace. Two years ago, Unity Two established a Can't Be Stopped Sports League, which targets at-risk youth. Specifically, they request that all sports league participants bring their younger siblings, parents, and neighbors to support this peaceful effort and to support a commitment into transitioning from a difficult life to a productive, law-abiding lifestyle. Their first annual baseball game, the L.A. Bridges Bat for Peace, was recently held in collaboration with Fremont High School in Council District Nine. I came and pitched a few balls and joined with over 200 residents to attend this great game. It was an inspiring and fun game, and it brought the whole community together. So I'm very proud to salute these men, Unity Two, for their dedication to the youth of our city and to our community, and for their efforts to help those involved with gangs to reclaim their lives and become productive and responsible community members. Thanks, and I want to know, I want you to know that we appreciate everything that you do every day. Thank you.
[speaking Spanish]. To the Honorable Councilwoman Jan Perry and members of the council, Unity Two is humbled by this presentation. Our mission statement tells us that it is our duty to save lives and strengthen families. We have acknowledged, we have acknowledged by this gracious body for doing what it is we have committed to do. We are inspired to continue. Intervention is a unique and very necessary deterrent for gang violence. Our commitment to reclaim the lives of gang members who have turned their lives around is motivated by our own personal stories. At the Bat for Peace, nearly 200 gang-affiliated residents attended our gang. Some were children of incarcerated parents, others were mothers of slain victims. More importantly, there were gang members who now want to become community members. Unity Two is proud to help in their transition. We would like to thank those who helped guide us to this point. The Honorable Mark Ridley Thomas for continuing his commitment to the community and keeping the L.A. Bridges program alive. Jim Brown of the Americam Program, Unity One, No Guns, Mr. Charles Norman of CDD, I mean, CRDP, Fremont High School, and the coach of the baseball team, Tim, Mr. Green, Tim Green, 103 to beat radio station, Flores Avion of CDC, and the L.A. Bridges program, and a shout-out to Bill Martinez for the Cal State LA Conflict Resolution Class. And we are especially proud of our clients who have made a decision to choose peace instead of pain, victory instead of violence, families preservation instead of fatalities. And in closing, we would like to extend our warmest thank yous to Jan Perry for having us out and coming out to the baseball game and just being a support for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'm happy to join today with Caprice Young, the school board president, but also an expectant mother, to celebrate Teenage Pregnancy Awareness Month. Note, she is pregnant, but not a teenager, just a couple years over. Today, we are recognizing May as Teenage Pregnancy Awareness Month. Among developed countries, unfortunately, the United States has the highest teenage pregnancy rate and the highest teenage birth rate. This is simply unacceptable. We are in an age where children are being born to and being raised by children. Almost 60,000 teenagers will have babies in California this year alone. Every community, every neighborhood in Los Angeles, regardless of geography, regardless of ethnicity, regardless of income level, will be affected. So what can we do? Teenagers must learn that having babies is serious business and that sex needs to be handled responsibly. And responsible sex doesn't have to be boring sex, it just is responsible sex. We adults must learn too. Reducing the rate of teen pregnancy only will happen if we work together, parents, community leaders, schools, health professionals, and policymakers, to create an environment that promotes healthy teen sexuality. We are proud in Council District 13 to be the home of one of the nation's bright lights in the fight against teenage pregnancy, the Hollywood Teen Community Project. The Hollywood Teen Community Project is part of a $60 million, 10-year teen pregnancy prevention initiative funded by the California Wellness Foundation. The initiative includes an important new public education campaign named Get Real About Teen Pregnancy, developed by Ogilvy Public Relations. Today, we are honoring the Hollywood Teen Community Project, the California Wellness Foundation, and Ogilvy Public Relations for their incredible work against teen pregnancy. I am pleased to be joined today by two young people who work with the Hollywood Teen Community Project, Monica Hernandez and Jose Castro. I'm going to turn the microphone first over to our school board president to say a word or two, and then if Monica and Jose, you'll please say something as well.
It's so important for our kids to finish school, and one of the big reasons why they often drop out is because they get pregnant unexpectedly. By being real with kids and letting them know really what being a parent is all about early on, and also letting them know exactly what it takes to keep from getting pregnant, we can make sure that we, that our kids stay in school and that they have a really great future. It means not being shy about talking about real things that a lot of us are uncomfortable about talking about. But our kids aren't shy, they're talking about it among themselves, and we need to make sure that they're getting real information and that we're not being squeamish so that they can have a future.
Hi, my name is Jose Castro, I'm 17 years old. I've been involved with teen pregnancy prevention since I was 13 with the Hollywood Teen Community Project.
Hi, my name is Monica Hernandez, I'm 18 years old. I've been involved with the Hollywood Teen Community Project, the teen pregnancy prevention, for about two years.
We have prepared some packets we'd like to share with you guys. And first of all, I'd like to thank Councilmember Eric Garcetti and your well-dedicated staff.
We want to thank L.A. City Council for giving us the opportunity to be here today.
And thank you, Councilmember Tom Labange. We're looking forward for working with you.
In recognition of Teen Pregnancy Awareness Month, we would like to tell you a little bit about us and our commitments.
The Hollywood Teen Community Project is a part of a statewide teen pregnancy prevention initiative. We have been working in Hollywood through our Children's Hospital of Los Angeles for over five years. Some of our activities include partnership with community agencies, providing information, education with many, with commu, sorry about this, providing information and education throughout outreach to thousands of community youth and adults, with many tools, especially Unity Magazine. Unity Magazine is created by the Hollywood Teen Community Project teens, which, um... We deeply inform its readers about not only pregnancy prevention, but also life issues about drugs, schools, work, and families.
Okay, we commit, we, the teens of Hollywood, commit to making healthy choices. We commit to educating teens on how to make these healthy choices, and we commit to assuring that teens have access to contraceptives, and we commit to informing teens about available resources and services.
We, the teens of Hollywood, commit to partnership with schools, clinics, and youth-serving agencies. We commit to working with the community and providing services for teens. We commit to ensuring that services provided in our community are teen-friendly. We commit to not give up and keep our hard work and commitment towards teen pregnancy
I am up here as proof that teens can do something with their lives if given the chance. I was given this information and the resources and the opportunity to work closely with adults that believed in me, and that's exactly what teens need. They need adults who are going to stand behind them and who are going to support them and give them that extra push when needed. I, and I speak not only for myself, but also for the other dedicated teens of the Hollywood Teen Community Project. I know we all want to make a change in teen pregnancy rates, but to do this, we must see and think realistically and realize that teens need more resources, they need support, and most of all, they need the education on how to make these healthy decisions. In order to see pregnancy rates go down and make it a reality, we must all commit, the community, city council, clinics, schools, parents, and make a true commitment on giving young adults the opportunity to make better decisions and healthier decisions for themselves. Thank you.
I'm just grateful I got the opportunity to educate myself and other teens on a very hard topic in our community. You know, I get a sense of relief knowing that there's teens like me out there, you know, doing the same thing, working towards the same goal. And I just want to thank the Hollywood Teen Community Project and you guys for your support. Thank you.
I know we have a lot of months that we have some sort of awareness, either it's, you know, Latino Heritage Month, African-American Heritage Month, we have Sexual Violence Awareness Month, but let's all commit in this month, not just to have this council presentation, but each one of us in this council circle to do something that will help combat teen pregnancy in our own communities. Let's not let these months just go by, so let's all recommit ourselves. It gives me great pleasure, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, Council President Alex Padilla, Councilmembers Jan Perry and Janice Hahn, today to present these resolutions of thanks. First, to Ogilvy Public Relations. And to all the teens that are making such a difference in your community and the entire Hollywood Teen Community Project, another resolution. And last but not least, an incredible foundation that's making a difference in our communities, and this work couldn't be done without your wonderful help, the California Wellness Foundation, thank you for all you're doing as well. Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, graduates of the Organizing Institute, come on up. Mr. President, colleagues, it gives me great pride to be able to introduce to you the second graduating class of Council District 13's Grassroots Leadership and Organizing Academy. Behind me and all around me are members of the communities of the 13th District, stakeholders who sometimes have been shut out of the system, who have taken upon themselves to go through a, an extensive curriculum in our academy to learn about community organizing in order to organize their own communities, to come here to places like City Hall, to the Board of Supervisors, and advocate on behalf of the people they live next to, their families, the people that they work with. This is a model which I hope will empower the community throughout the city, and I know that Councilmember Pacheco is doing a similar project in Council District 14. And of course, the great council member from the 8th District, Mark Ridley Thomas, has laid down an example too with his Neighborhood Empowerment Congress. But the idea behind this is quite simple and quite powerful, that if stakeholders are given the tools, that they can become the advocates, and we no longer have to become the gatekeepers. If they can create direct relationships with the city and with other governmental entities, that they know what the problems are, they know what the solution... that they know what the problems are, they know what the solutions are, and they can bring them to their own communities. I joked with this group and every group of graduates that'll come before us, we are training you to be able to advocate with us and advocate against us. We want to give you the tools, and we won't always agree, but we will be equals at the table. And because of the work that you all did with my community organizing team, that I'd also like to recognize Fabiola Vilches, George Villanueva, Heather Repinning, and Ana Guerrero, the work that you all did together puts forth that model right where it should be, in our communities. So, in recognition of your efforts and commitment to your neighborhood by completing Council District 13's Grassroots Leadership and Organizing Academy, I give you these congratulatory and graduation certificates. Your commitment demonstrates the depth of your passion for developing yourself as a conscientious leader who strives to create social and economic equity in the City of Los Angeles. I'm very proud to honor you on this day. And before I get to the names, I'm wondering if I could call on Ana Guerrero to just say a word about the institute. Come on up. Surprise, surprise. Just say something.
Okay, I just want to say that I'm really proud of the graduates here. They came to four trainings where we learned about how to build relational power. We learned how to do one-on-one meetings and how to motivate people to participate in public life. We also learned how to organize effective meetings with elected officials. And we also learned about the organizing process. So we all look forward to working with you over the coming years on your multiple organizing projects, and we hope we'll have a very productive partnership.
Thank you, Ana. I surprised her with that. So, here are the graduates. Martha Yolanda Tapia. Mary Wells. Amanda Vasquez. Martha Vargas. Laura Sanchez. Enrique Ramos Jr. Jenny Olivas. A close neighbor of mine, Millie Martinez. Avette Martinez. Vicky Harris. Marvin Garcia. And David de la Torre. Gabriel Diaz. Okay, and we're going to hear real quick. Go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. I just want to thank our councilman, Eric Garcetti, and his wonderful staff for giving us the community an opportunity to learn and to have those tools available to all of us, and to have a greater impact and make a greater difference in our communities. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, everyone.
Coming soon to a station near you.
On behalf of Millie Martinez and myself, who live in the Elysian Heights track, we were very grateful to be brought on board to this leadership training because in our community, we do need to organize and have the community members know what is accessible to them, because at this time, they are not doing anything. So again, we are very humbled and we are very grateful. Thank you to the city council. Thank you to Eric Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. The chair recognizes Ms. Galanter for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm being joined here by a group from the Mar Vista Family Center, and you've been hearing all morning about wonderful organizations all over the city. Let me tell you, we've got the best. This organization is -- I've had them in here before, and I hope that all of you will have a chance at some time to go and visit this place. This is an amazing thing. It grew out of the need, some needs in the Mar Vista community for childcare, and the people who started it 20, 25 years ago, realized that you can't just take care of a child for a few hours a day, that a child is part of a family, and if the child needs care, the parents probably have some concerns and needs as well. And so the childcare center grew into a whole series of other programs, because as the whole families got involved, you couldn't just enroll your child, you had to enroll your whole family. The kids grew up, did very well, and nobody wanted to leave, and so they started, as they grew up, pulling their own weight, taking care of the younger ones, and instituting after-school programs and a whole series of other things. Several years ago, the center's program had become so well-known that people were anxious from other communities to come in and find out how they do this. And the center then developed an institute, which is right next door. They don't expand into other communities, but they are -- this is neighborhood empowerment at its best. They teach you how to do your own. And I have to say two things. One is that the most impressive thing I've ever seen is that most people do once a year cleanups. These guys do it once a month. And everybody works, from the littlest kids pushing the brooms, to the bigger kids who pick up the garbage, to the adults who haul it away in the truck. And it is really an extraordinary example of what can be done when a community decides, we're going to take care of our own, we're going to take care of our own problems, and by the way, while we're at it, we're going to help other people do it as well. And whenever I get depressed, as I do every so often, and wonder in some of our controversial days, why am I doing this? I go to an event at the Mar Vista Family Center, and I always go home saying, oh yeah, that's why. So it, I -- this is a little twist today, because I've given them a lot of presentations, and it must be almost graduation time, but they asked me today if they could come in to share with me in front of you and everybody else, something that they have for me, I hope. So, they promised me it's good, too. So it is my very great honor and pleasure to introduce Lucia Diaz, who's the director of the Mar Vista Family Center, who will introduce the whole crew. I'm glad you were all able to take time to come down here. It makes it even more exciting. Much as I love Lucia, it's more exciting to have everybody else here as well. So with that, let's say another round of thanks and congratulations, and gratitude that we have an organization like this in our community. They, you're going to have to, I'm going to leave out something, you're going to have to mention the others. They have an after-school tutoring program, they have job training, they have gang intervention, they have construction internships, they have, where guys go out and learn how to actually be construction workers, they have job preparation, they have, they started out with a mothers' group and a fathers' group, and they each met once and said, this is going to work, we're a family, we have to meet together. So they have parents' groups. And they do it all over and over and over again. It's really quite a wonderful thing. So, congratulations to all of you for all that you do, and thank you, and let me introduce Lucia Diaz.
Thank you. I want to thank all the council members, especially, I would like to thank Councilwoman Ruth Galanter, who for many years has been, had been with us in the good times and the bad times, and that's why today we would like to take this time to recognize her for all the work that she has done with us, not just coming to our graduation, but also taking the time sometime to come and sweep the street with us. And I think that's really had made a difference, so that's why unfortunately, not the whole community can be here. But in name of the Mar Vista Family Center, members from the community, and some of the programs that she did not mention, like you say, is like the youth program, that we have a very large group of youth leaders in our community, and today we have some of them, they're representing them. So we are here to recognize her for her consistent support and her commitments to the Mar Vista Family Center, to the families, and to our community. And I have swan off for youth who would like to express some words. Greg, Martin?
I would just like to thank you, Councilwoman Ruth Galanter, for supporting my community and for supporting the Mar Vista Family Center in creating safe space for youth like myself and other youth, so we could go and receive support for a better education. So thank you from all the youth in the community.
You'll never believe this. I did not set this up. Honest to God, they asked to do this. I know you're not going to believe that.
We have one of our parents, and now she's one of our teachers, Tommy Peterson.
Good morning. On behalf of the preschool, the parents, and the teachers, and the children, we want to acknowledge you for all the support that you've been giving to the program over all the years. I don't know how many, but it's been a lot of, yeah. And for always coming out to the graduations and supporting us there, giving out the certificates to the parents, and being there to acknowledge the children, too, so we really appreciate it.
Really, it is my pleasure and excites me every time I do it. Oh, look what I got. Okay, guys, take a good look at this. Thank you. Okay, you read it.
Mar Vista Family Center, award of excellence, Ruth Galanter, and appreciation for many years of friendship and generous support to the Mar Vista Family Center community.
You know, I know it's late. I just thought of some more things I have to tell you about this place. They are so smart that one of the things they have in the childcare center is a crying mat. And we might think about this. You know how when you're little, every once, and when you're big, every once in a while, you just have had it up to here, and you just want to cry? So they have a special place, you can go sit on the crying mat, and nobody bothers you, and when you're through crying, you can come back, and nobody's allowed to say, ooh, stop crying. You get to cry if you need to cry, you go and cry. I think that's one of the smartest things. And also, the graduation is not just little kids from childcare center. Graduation is people finishing their elementary school education, their high school education, and through UCLA, they're, they get certificates for, what's the official title?
A teacher.
It's a teaching, preschool teaching credential, childcare credential. So this is a great place. Thank you all. I really, this is wonderful. I love you.
Thank you very much.
Come in the back, because we have, we do the whole thing with photographs. Thank you, Doug. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter. I believe this concludes presentations for today's meeting. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, not on the agenda is Special One, and is motion submitted by Mr. Garcetti for Mr. Holden and seconded by Mr. LeBonde. City Attorney will speak to the need to make findings.
Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a reward motion. The police have called and asked that it be made because they believe that persons in the community would come forth. On April 29th, at about 11:10 PM, Kwame Jenkins, a 22-year-old male, was shot and killed while standing by his car, which was parked in front of 2338 West 20th Street. And because the police have called and asked that this be done immediately, the council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda and that there is an immediate need to act.
Members wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Special One now before us, members wishing to be heard on the motion. Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Special One is approved. Forthwith, please. Mr. Clerk, forthwith also on item number one of the special meeting agenda.
Mr. President, item number Special Two, also not on the agenda, is a motion brought forth by Ms. Gruehl and seconded by Ms. Perry and Garcetti. The city attorney will speak to the needs to make the findings.
Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This morning, the city received information from the state indicating the definitive deadline for submission of applications relative to the Housing Department's notice of funding availability. It appears that because this deadline is later than what the city originally thought it would be, that they, that the city can extend the city's housing NOFA application deadline from today to a new deadline of May 10th, and therefore, the council would need to make the findings that there is an immediate need to act, and the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda.
Members wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Special Two now before us, members wishing to be heard on the motion. Ms. Gruehl.
I just asked my colleagues if they could approve this item this morning. As indicated by the city attorney, we just found out today the actual date that the state will be having the applications. It allows us to have some housing providers that did not have a chance in this three-week period of time to be able to have an additional week to apply. The Housing Department will be notifying all of the individuals who attended the Bitters Conference to let people know that they do have an additional week as soon as, if we are able to approve this today. So thank you for your support on this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Gruehl. Anybody else? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on Special Two, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Special Two is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Mr. President, item number nine, it's a closed-session item, and that is remaining on the desk, so now is the time for public comment on non-agenda items.
An opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. The council calls forward at this time Jackie St. James.
Good morning, Mr. President, and members of the city council. I'm here this morning because of a traffic, am I too close? A traffic congestion problem where I live at 9400 Exposition Boulevard, Los Angeles, 90034. At that corner, there is a four-way stop sign, and very narrow streets. Now, 13 years ago, Exposition Boulevard was wider, but the land has been determined to be used by MTA. However, not too long ago, Albertson's opened up, and the traffic there at rush hour is horrendous. The trucks cannot turn, people are at stop signs, they can't back up. Now, I wrote a letter to our county board of supervisors, Yvonne Rathray Burke. I received a letter back on April 11th stating that I would hear from someone in Councilman Nate Holden's office. It's almost a month. I brought copies of the letter, and I'd like to see someone come out and address that traffic issue. Okay? So who should I give this to?
So, we'll take that letter.
Before we have a whole bunch of traffic accidents.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next public speaker, Mr. Mike Schaefer.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I'm Michael Schaefer. I have met most of you in the political world here. I've served two terms as a city councilman of the government of San Diego. My topic is something called the Code of Fair Campaign Practices, which I've given a copy to each of your desks. The Code of Fair Campaign Practices is a state law that requires that election officials give every candidate a copy of it, and they can sign it or not sign it. It just says that you're going to engage your campaign on the issues and not engage in character defamation. As a charter city, we're not obligated to follow general election law. We can decide to do it differently. I want you to know that the city and county of San Francisco, which is a charter city, the city of San Diego, which is a charter city, numerous charter cities, go ahead and distribute it to all of their candidates. We have not. I think that the city council of Los Angeles should either decide affirmatively to abide by this and instruct Mr. Kerry to give this to all candidates, or decide not to do it, which would be different than the other charter cities who have decided to do it. I made a speech on this about six months ago, but it's a new city council today. I would ask that you refer this to the Rules Committee and set it for hearing on the Rules Committee, and that notification be given to me that it's set before the Rules Committee, and I'll be happy to make a presentation in more detail at that time, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Mr. Roberto Carvajal.
Hello, Mr. President. I've been here before twice, trying to develop an interest in fairyism, and since I'm not getting interviewed, or give me any callbacks, I like to leave my webpage with a viewing audience, and I beg anybody to call. audience, and I beg anybody to call me who is in the sound of my voice, or the email doesn't work, you can call me at this number, so that we can have the State Department of Alcohol and Drugs maybe do a study on it. Their number is 916-323-1805, and that's Catherine Jett and Rosa Escuria. Also, Department of Health, Dr. Schoenhoff, and Fred Leaf, or one of your county officials. Maybe we can get together and have this, which is electrotherapeutics, to get people off of drugs and alcohol. Like I said before, it got me off a crack in one day, and it shouldn't take very long to find out how it works, off of alcohol in two, and cigarettes in three.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, motions are posted and referred.
The motion shall be posted and referred.
Councilmembers' requests from excused council attendants. Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused on May 31st to leave at noon for personal business. This meets policy.
Mr. Garcetti is excused.
Councilmember Miskowski requests to be excused to arrive at 11:00 AM on May 29th, June 5th, June 12th, and June 26th for city business. This also meets policy.
Ms. Miskowski is excused.
And Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused on Tuesday, May 7th, to arrive at 11:30, and Friday, May 10th, to leave at 11:30. A motion is required.
Ms. Gruel moves. Mr. Pacheco is excused.
The desk is clear, so for item number 9.
In conformance with California law, the Council now adjourned into closed session. I ask the guards to please clear the chambers. Welcome back into open session. Mr. Clerk, the matter before us, please.
Item number 9, there is a motion on the desk to approve the City Attorney recommendations to settle case in the amount of $225,000.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 1 no.
That matter is approved. Forthwith, please.
Mr. President, the desk is clear.
Are there any announcements? Ms. Hahn.
I would like to invite everyone to come down to San Pedro this Saturday for an open house to visit the historic Red Car. We have an open house from 1 to 4 at Birth 155A. That's 877 Pier A Street in Wilmington. It's, if you haven't seen the old Red Car, it's a great opportunity to visit it and hear everything about it. I think Councilmember Labonge has already come down there and seen it with his children last time, so I invite everybody to come down and do that this Saturday, 1 to 4.
Announcements, Mr. Labonge.
President, again, a reminder tomorrow, on May 4th, at several locations, led by the Friends of the Los Angeles River will be cleaning up the Los Angeles River, and you could join in us on that. For information, you could call 562-591-5980, or www.folar.org. Join us at Las Feliz in the Los Angeles River, right in that water village, where we'll clean up there. Thank you.
Other announcements? Many events going on this weekend relative to Cinco de Mayo, including, as was mentioned at the beginning of our meeting, the festivities at Alvera Street. So, the entire city of Los Angeles is invited to participate in those ceremonies as well. Are there any adjourned motions? Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask that we adjourn today in the memory of Mr. Lou Rogers, who was a longtime community member in Councilmember Miskowski's district, who passed away earlier this week at the age of 81. I asked if I'd be allowed to make this adjourned motion, because Lou Rogers was clearly a dear, dear friend of the Hahn family for as long as I can remember. He was born and raised in Canada, yet served in the US Army, and soon after that, became an American citizen, settling here in the Southland. His career extended to a wide range of issues related to real estate, finance, construction, and development. He was the former president and chairman of the Board of the National Bank of Commerce, he was a California real estate broker, and a licensed general contractor. He was very devoted to his community. He was involved in the City of Hope, the United Jewish Welfare Fund, and served on the Board of University Synagogue. In addition, Lou served on a number of commissions for LA County, many of those, my own father appointed him to serve. He will always be remembered for his kind and giving ways, and he will be greatly missed by all of us who knew him and loved him. He is survived by his wife Sue, his son Jeff Rogers with his wife Kathy, and his stepsons Randy and Stephen, and seven grandchildren. I have another one, I'd like us to adjourn in the memory of Mr. Ralph Hansen, who passed away on April 22nd. Mr. Hansen was a 71-year San Pedro resident, and a 34-year employee of the Los Angeles Fire Department, retiring in 1991. Ralph was born in the old San Pedro Hospital, and attended local schools, and graduated from San Pedro High School in 1950. He joined the United States Navy and served for four years with distinction. He and his wife Mary Lou were married in 1952, and after his naval service, settled in San Pedro, where they raised their three children, Richard, Stephen, and Jennifer. He joined the LA City Fire Department in 1957, and served for 34 years in several duties, concluding his career at Fire Station ADA, driving the crash rig at LAX until 1991. He is survived by his wife and three children, and five grandchildren.
Thank you. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm making these adjourned motions on behalf of Councilmember Nate Holden from the 10th Council District. The first one is for Jesse R. Soreno. Mr. Soreno was with the Community Redevelopment Agency for 13 years. He was an accounts payable supervisor. When he passed, he was 56 years of age. Services were planned for today. He is survived by his wife Susan, and four children. The second one is in memory of James Jim Williams, who passed away Tuesday, April 30th, 2002. He was a longtime City Hall lobbyist dating back to the Bradley era. He was 72 years old at the time of his passing. Services are pending. Mr. Williams is survived by nine children, Clarice Williams-Hart, his mother, and Dorothy Williams, his sister.
Thank you. Any others? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.